Lorie G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we go forward, Pam, I'm gonna choose an alternate. Jason will be joining us in just a moment, but we do have one member who is not here this evening, so we'll seat one of our alternates. And Pam, we'll go ahead and choose left tonight.
Survey says?
Steve.
Steve.
Steve, if you don't mind coming up and sitting for John Hutzco until such time as he returns to service on the board. And we have two upcoming meeting dates, September 16th and October 7th. And I have not had a chance yet to look at the July minutes. Has anybody else had a chance to look at them, or can we hold them over to the next meeting?
Could that be mine?
Okay. Alright, so the first item on our agenda tonight is Orthopedic Associates Site Plan on Route 52 for decision. Brendan, Michelle, Joe, anything we need to go over before we offer the decision? The resolution, I should say?
No.
I would just like to add, Joe, on a previous discussion, we talked about upsizing some pipes to try to help further mitigate stormwater impact, and since that meeting, I worked with Chris, talked to Chris, and then agreed to upsize it one more size to 24 inch, which gives us about a 250% increase in detention, so I want to thank them for making that improvement.
Terrific. Alright, does any questions or comments from board members before someone offers the resolution? And do I have a volunteer to offer the resolution? Michael?
Resolution of final site plan approval, name of the subdivision, Orthopedic Associates of Dutchess County, proposed medical office building. Name of the applicant is Orthopedic Associates of Dutchess County. Location is 1955 Route 52, grid number 635604555168. Resolution offered by Planning Board Member Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for a site plan approval to include 12,000 square foot, two-story medical offices, plus 83 parking spaces on 2.15 acres. And whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under seeker, for which a coordinated review was not undertaken.
Actually, I have a change there. There was a coordinated review.
Okay.
Can we just strike "not," or do we need to say something?
We need to put the date in, then, because it's...
It's in the next paragraph.
Okay. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on...
July 15th.
July 15th.
August 15th.
And August 5th. And adopted a negative declaration on August 5th, 2014. And whereas the applicant has now submitted a final site plan and further finds that the application meets the town's requirements for final site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Orthopedic Associates of Dutchess County, Proposed Medical Office Building, prepared by the Jason Companies, dated 3/27/14 and revised through July 21st, 2014. That's it? Right? Those are the right dates?
That's the correct date for your...
Is it the right date?
Yes.
Okay. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed off by the planning board chair. One, the modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of July 28th, 2014. Two, agreement that the owner will cooperate if adjoining properties are developed as to allow internal connections. Three, the plat will contain the written approval of the Dutchess County Health Department before it is signed by the chairperson. Four, demarcation of wetlands buffer by Boulder fence landscaping or other suitable material. And the boundary of the wetlands buffer shall be set forth in the deed for the property of lots, if applicable. Five, final landscape plan to be approved by the town planner. Six, final SWIP approved by the town engineer and maintenance agreement approved by the town attorney. Seven, the fair share contribution set forth in the letter by HVEA Engineering and the negative declaration is hereby set at $2,000. Said amount is to be used to pay share of the cost of a proposed Route 52 corridor traffic study. This obligation will cease if no such study is commissioned within two years from obtaining a final certificate of occupancy. Eight, connection to public water and sewer, provided same will be available prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Nine, the project will be subject to a sidewalk maintenance agreement that is acceptable to the town attorney. Ten, an inspection fee for the town's review of the proposed improvements will be based... excuse me, on an engineer's estimate as approved by the town engineer. In addition, a performance bond related to the completion of any site work that might occur beyond the date of either a temporary or a final CO will be provided per the direction of the town engineer. Eleven, a landscape and screening maintenance agreement shall be provided in a form that is acceptable to the town attorney. Twelve, the town will receive a copy of the New York State Department of Transportation Highway Work Permit or other suitable documents approving the work as presented on the plans, as approved or otherwise amended prior to seeking a building permit.
Okay, we need to just go back to a couple of things. The first item, were there... Michelle or Brendan, did you guys have anything outstanding in your letters?
We did not.
Okay. No. Okay, good. And then, item number four, doesn't our pavement limit end up within the buffer of the wetlands? So, I just wanna... Do we need to modify this?
They are putting in curving and landscaping, if you wanted to think of that as a buffer.
But it's not gonna be along the buffer area, it's gonna be along the edge of pavement, where the pavement encroaches into that buffer, right?
Yeah, it'll be... Well, they're gonna grade, and they're gonna grade within some of the wetland and impact some of that area.
Well, I think the question is, the plan you're approving shows that intrusion, but do you want to have any other fencing with boundary from that point, because that's gonna be permitted intrusion.
Right. I think we should have an appropriate boundary around the wetlands, but specific to this plan, where the pavement is...
There is an intrusion into it, right?
Right. Where the pavement's gonna be there, I'm not expecting us to put boulders in the middle of pavement.
No, but while you're approving the plan, you're granting them a permit to do that. So then this clause, this is standard clause, would go on to say if you want any other boundary beyond that, what would it be?
But, I don't know if the other point that we might miss is during construction and clearing whatnot, do you need to put up like an orange fence saying, okay, not to go beyond it until you've established that permanent boundary?
We can...
I don't know if that's what Lori was maybe alluding to. Because typically, before you build your permanent, you gotta go in there and do rough grading and clearing.
Correct.
You'd wanna know ahead of time where that boundary is, put up some temporary protection.
Orange protection fence.
Right. And then not to encroach beyond that until you get your permanent...
Correct.
...demarcation in place, whatever shape that might be.
Do you want some sort of rocks or something along the toe of slope to kinda indicate where that boundary is? As part of our final plan, would that give you some sort of a demarcation barrier?
I think that's fine, and do we need any kind of specific curving or guardrail or something along the pavement where it's encroaching, so that people aren't walking off the pavement into the wetlands?
Yeah, we...
How far away will it be from the edge of pavement?
Well, that, you know, if they have an onsite plow truck, they don't stick it into the wetlands where it's no use.
No, correct.
You know, things like that.
Right, I just... It's not gonna be along the buffer area, but I think we need to have an appropriate delineation.
I'm thinking because we have a... Kinda give you an idea here, we'd have like five or six feet between the curb and the top of the slope to where it actually drops down, and there's about a four-foot drop over here, and probably about a three-foot drop here.
Natural terrain may do it. What prevents the snow guy from pushing up all the snow over and using that as a...
So right here, we have curbing along here, so what we could... What we can do in this area here is, if you want, we could put some rocks along the top of that, to kinda give it a...
You can still plow snow over that. If you wanna be 100%, you'd have to fence or railing or something.
We could put a railing around... Is that you?
Sorry, I thought your point was during construction.
No, my point is, in perpetuity, this parking lot will encroach into wetlands, so we don't wanna have any further encroachment, because we don't have a boundary or border. During construction, absolutely, I would assume we would expect that with the construction fencing, but...
We wanna... Is the intent is to demarc the actual boundary of the wetland, or the...
Right, so folks aren't walking off the edge of pavement, to Scott's point, they're not plowing snow into the wetlands, that sort of thing.
Usually it marks the buffer. But in this case, you're in the buffer, so it would be as close to the pavement as you could possibly make it, I think, so that you avoid any more impact or incursion into the buffer.
I mean, to me, even a sign might be appropriate.
What kind of slope do you have off the...
We have one.
Some projects have been...
I think that'd be a bad idea to have a railing on top of one on three.
I could put, you know, a guide rail here. We have like, like I said, we have like five or six feet here, so...
I think part of that, you were showing for snow storage, that rectangle or something?
Yeah, off to the... Off to the side of the wetland.
Even though people have shown, doesn't be plow guy over time, doesn't dump it in that thing. I mean, a timber rail, I think, would be fine, if you put up a timber rail.
We could put one over here, and then coming around up to the location where the wetlands are. That suit the board?
That would work.
I'm pretty sure you do show orange fence during construction already on your plan, so that part of it's taken care of, it's just afterward.
Yeah, we also have the silt fence there in addition to the orange fence.
Okay, so I'm sorry, what is the change? What's the wording changed to?
We wanted it as easy on ourselves, because the kilted birds are not stones. So if we're about to, I guess, a timber rail installed to separate the boundary of the limits of the wetland from the disperated area in the corners there.
Northeast, I guess.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's the during construction...
No, that's fine. Orange construction fencing is during, that'll be done in construction. And then the only other question I had was the number eight. It says, prior to issuance of a CBO.
Well, we feel we'll have that worked out with them even before they get their building permit, but we may know the source will be there, but it may not be ready until they get their CBO, so we have to just coordinate. And if it's not available, then I don't know.
Does that include sewer as well?
It says, public water and sewer.
If it's available, if it's not gonna be available till you... We're not gonna hold you.
My concern with the sewer being is the placement of the laterals in the field and everything, and that may occur.
Well, you were gonna provide a schedule.
Yeah, I emailed that.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
Okay. I'm just...
We're not gonna hold up your CBO.
Okay. You think you'll have a better feel, maybe November, December on that?
Yes.
We'll take a look at your schedule.
That's good, that'll... I think that's fair, you know, around November, if you have a good feel.
We don't intend to hold you.
Okay.
So, Scott, we're saying if water and sewer are available at the point where we issue a CBO, we would expect this applicant to connect. And I think what you're saying is that there's some point prior to the issuance of a CBO where if it's available, you connect, if it's not, you can move on with your day, and you'll get your CBO.
Yeah, and practically speaking, there's gonna have to be a commitment made prior to the actual issuance of a CBO.
Because they're not gonna be putting in their septic system the day before the CBO, right?
You're correct in that, yeah.
Okay. So Tom, do we need to tweak this wording a little bit, so it's...
So, would I just say, decision may be made by November, by when we say December 2014?
I prefer November.
November. November 2014.
Okay.
Or maybe some language to effect of not delay, or without delay of certificate, leaving... You know, because their schedule might be sliding too, it may buy us more time, so I would just like to say we won't delay then.
Right, I just thought we were trying to identify the point in time during construction where it would be a go, no-go, and if you get past that point, then...
Well, I haven't had the opportunity to look at your schedule, but it's gonna come down to that.
Okay, alright. So Tom, how are you changing that one?
Correction of CBO, and that the town will render a decision as to its availability by November of 2014, or such other date that may be mutually agreed.
Great.
Because they've submitted a work schedule, so we should be able to...
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions, comments, or changes?
Do you have a copy of your landscaping drainage maintenance agreements that I could provide to their attorney? Okay.
Lori, the plans I have to revise to August 13th. Is that the correct date on your final plans?
Yes.
So Pam, the second to last paragraph on the first page should be August 13th? Okay. Instead of July 13th.
Also, just another small change of site areas. I noted it as 2.87 acres, rather than 2.15. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah.
In the first paragraph.
2.87.
Okay. Alright. Last call for any changes?
And I just wanted to clarify that the landscaping includes its representation, or the burn, the screening, and the fence for the adjoining property.
Yes, we add the additional trees.
Can we just also note that that should also include the fence that we just talked about for the wetland boundary?
That's gotta be included in the landscaping agreement.
Right.
Be it further resolved that within five business days, the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized members of the planning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, I didn't have your second.
Second.
Alright, thank you, Craig. And votes as follows. Jason?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
And myself? Aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for the John Jay Gas Station Proposed Remediation Building on Route 52.
Alright, you guys, I believe you have the 11x17 we sent. If not, I got a copy of it for you, but...
And you have... You provided one that's both your existing site condition and the new condition, depending how long the building needs to be there, and you can see where it's situated.
Correct. Give you an idea of where this is gonna be located. 12x12 temporary shed, basically used during remediation process. It's gonna house basically what is being housed in the car wash facility right now, which is the carbon filters, the filtering mechanism. So when they take down that building, they have an opportunity to move it over to that temporary shed location and continue to run those systems while they're doing some of the work.
So this is specifically related to the decontamination of the site and the ongoing monitoring?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. They estimate, you know, starting construction or demoing in the near future. I know we did submit our demo permits to the building department. They had a couple odds and ends that we had to address. And again, getting geared up for the remediation process, this is one of the more procedural things with the applicant, and facilitating the equipment.
Right. Okay. The building itself, I'm assuming is a temporary, and you would take it down when you don't need to monitor any longer, or you're not doing the filtering any longer?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Any questions or comments from board members?
The one question I had was, Brian, there was a concern about the sightlines on that corner, as you're coming out of Lake City. With the shed, I assume it's gonna be small enough that any kind of sightline disturbance is gonna be very limited.
Right. And in addition, when we originally did the site plan out there, we did take a look at the site distance, especially going around the bend, going north. And we are gonna cut down, as part of the sightland, site approval process, some of the vegetation in that area, trim it back, so we can increase the sightline. This is kinda located more toward the Archway Plaza property line. We're about six feet off the edge of the property line. So between, you know, between the property line and the edge of pavement, you got about 15 feet, so we tried to push it over as much as we could.
So it doesn't make that any more of an aligned curve?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? This appears to be... I'm sorry, Brendan, Michelle, Joe, any concerns? Scott?
Well, the one thing, I have to double check this, but I think the required setback is 10 feet, you said you had 6 feet, so that may require a variance, because I know it's gonna be there for potentially a period of time, right? So, can you shift it and get 10 feet?
There's complete flexibility in shifting it, plus or minus. We just pushed it in the corner. I believe when there was the pre-construction, Pam kind of relayed to me that they wanted to make sure that the shed was positioned in an area that didn't encroach on circulation within the site. So this thing, again, is temporary, you can move it with a loader. So if we have to push that forward as much as we have to, to make sure we don't have to go for variances, we're amendable to that.
So, to be on the safe side, Scott, because pushing it forward would mean it's gonna end up in the employee parking spaces?
Here's...
I'm sorry, Tom, I can't...
I think it'd be sidelined, they say Archway, is it 6 feet from Archway?
It's 6 feet from the property line of Archway, and 7 feet from the property line on the Lake Drive side.
Again, if we're getting to the point of where we're installing curbing, I think there's gonna be an avenue where...
It's 10.
I don't think it's gonna be there, because that's pretty far along in the process. I think the remediation will be completed if we get to a curbing state, because that usually means we're...
But your worst-case scenario is that you'd be pushing it forward into the employee parking, so whatever we would be looking at here would be potentially having the employee parking spaces obstructed for whatever period of time it needs to remain?
Correct.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
That's assuming we consider a structure, which I would think would be the infrastructure.
Temporary structure, yeah. It's not gonna have footings or anything, right? Right now, the condition on site, they can put it anywhere, so it meets the 10 feet, and then if the board is amenable to allowing it to remain in the employee parking spots in the event that it's not done, you're still within the 10 feet. Concerns? I know it takes a couple of parking spots, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna be there. Can we say, if it's gonna be there for more than a year, that you're back in and just let us know?
They give you an update and give you an update on where we are.
Or have you go for the actual variance, so you get it out of your parking?
Right. We're amendable to that. Hopefully, it doesn't have to come down to that, but worst case.
Concerns?
I don't think this...
Okay.
It has to do what it has to do.
Well, remediation has to be completed.
Well, I mean, Kenny, what's the issue with getting a variance?
The timing. I, you know, I like to avoid an additional step, especially with a temporary shed, because we wanna get going out there. We pulled the tanks back in November, so I think it's more of a timing aspect. You know, we didn't... I think when we ran the parking analysis, we didn't take into account parking at the pumps. So, I mean, there is some flexibility there, not much, but, you know, I think, again, I think we're gonna be...
Was it dimensioned again? I'm sorry, was it...
12x12?
I gotta wait, we can work that out, as long as the board is aware that the structure is gonna be somewhere on site, we'll work out the parking. And, you know, this property is subjected to special permit for the remediation of the site.
Right.
And under that, that gives you flexibility with respect to any dimensional issues, so that will be...
Well, then, put it where you want it to put it.
Well, as long as that allows us that flexibility, then I think we can keep it out of the employee parking.
Right.
Trying to... Because I agree, for something that's only gonna be there for a couple months, to put you through a zoning variance, I just...
Makes sense.
It just seems...
Alright.
Okay. Alright, so do I have a motion to approve a 12x12 wood prefab shed to be installed for no more than 12 months on site, or else you come back to us within the... What is this, the northern section of the property on the John Jay Gas Station, filling station property?
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, our next item on our agenda is a discussion for Stuart Scott, Six Slats subdivision Do we have your subdivision plan to put up on the board? Up, I'm sorry, up on the screen?
Mark, would you mind doing some stand-up while we wait, please?
Continue our discussion from the previous meeting. Regarding the plans have advanced, we've now quantified the limits of disturbance for all the wetland areas. We've unified the wetland disturbance. Since our discussions, the board had at a site meeting, we've taken the proposed wetland mitigation area here and rearranged it so that these two existing wetlands are now joined. The change to the other wetland, that one's to remain as is. This wetland is to be removed as entirety, the difference being made up down here in the relocation area. We're still awaiting response from Army Corps of Engineers. Would have liked to have the permit in hand when I came in here tonight, but it didn't happen.
Okay. That's probably okay, because if the planning board elects to make changes, you're gonna have to work that out with Army Corps as well. Can you just show me where the house is located on the lot where you're reclaiming wetlands? And about how many feet is the house from the edge of the wetland?
From the core wetland?
From whatever the edge of the wetland will be when you're done with the reclamation.
It's at least 100 feet, because we have a septic system in this area. It'll do it with different lines.
Okay. That's okay, that's fine.
Proposed septic system for lot 5B is here. We have a large rate bed system, has to be located here, and we have at least 100 feet from the toe of the slope of the built pad to the new line when we're removing a portion of this wetland, we're placing it in the relocation area.
I'm gonna have you just come back to Mike, because we can't hear you when you're not talking near the mic. So a portion of the purple that you just circled, it sounds like you're saying you're abandoning, you're filling in?
Well, the portion here is going to be removed to obtain proper separation requirements with the Dutchess County Health Department. So the new line would be approximately here, and there's gonna be a split rail fence to go around that entire area. That's gonna be a permanent demarcation of where any future disturbance could or cannot go.
So, net-net, your proposal is to lose how much wetland and to reclaim how much?
Well, the total balance is gonna be the same. It's gonna be the same square footage of wetland after as it is currently.
It's a one-to-one mitigation?
It's a one-to-one swap.
So how does the quality improve?
I'm sorry?
How does the quality improve? Right, that was the intent here, was, well, consolidating, we'd wind up with better wetlands.
You wind up with...
Yeah, there's a couple of comments. One, it needs to be mowed so we can really do a thorough inspection of that line, because right now it's just overgrown. We may be on our to-do list, but we're not going to get to it anytime soon, so we're going to have to clear it so we can inspect the line.
I'm sorry, which portion are you saying?
That runs through the wetland part that they plan on incorporating.
I'm not sure Army Corps is going to do that.
Lot five. Okay, just lot five. Not the other ones, or?
I don't know the Army Corps would let them mow it, because technically, they'd be disturbing a wetland. They wouldn't be allowed to bring equipment in there, probably. I mean, around it, they might be able to, because the Army Corps doesn't have a buffer.
Well, we can get fairly close, though, right?
So is it just outside of the wetland area?
Can you just use your pointer and show us? The pipe runs right now, where-
You mean the existing 36-inch drain line?
Yeah, the existing drain line, and what's the existing, where is the existing wetland right now with regard to that last run?
There's a catch basin, right here. The pipe runs east-west, this direction to another catch basin here, and it actually goes beneath for maybe a width of about seven or eight feet under the existing wetland that's been flagged.
So I think we could mow a lot of it and not be actually in the wetlands. And by we, I mean the applicant, I don't mean we. Sorry.
But is your intent to lower the elevation in some of these areas of what existed now?
Our goal is to try to keep things as close to existing conditions as possible.
Okay.
And just-
Lower?
No, because if you lower it, the water level's just going to come up and it's going to create surface water instead of maintaining that.
But I mean, over the pipe, I mean, I can't walk it right now. I'm envisioning that over top of the pipe, it's either elevated or, I don't know, we can't inspect it right now.
Well, according to the original plans done for Phase 1, that pipe was supposed to be installed with an underdrain running alongside it. The idea of all the piping with the underdrains was to lower the water table to make these lots buildable. Over 20 years, it just didn't happen. I don't know exactly what the water level is at the area that you want to inspect. I believe that whenever I've gone to the site and I've looked inside the catch basin here along Warren Farm Road, I've always heard water going into it, but not a huge rush, it's more like something that'd be typical of an underdrain.
There was water there when we went out, there's always been water, we're not getting that.
Let me just finish the comments. One comment was declared so we can inspect it. We need verification of what type pipe it is, whether it's plastic or cordiated metal. It's cordiated metal that actually runs across Warren Farm Road, so I'm not sure if it continues or if it's plastic.
You mean the run that goes from the east to the west side?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Well, the run that crosses Warren is metal, cordiated.
Yeah.
Now the question is, we can't tell this piece that comes through the wetland, proposed wetland, what that's made out of.
Okay, we can verify the, for the original plans called for HDP, I believe 36-inch.
All right, so we need to verify that. And then beyond that, you know, I will reserve my decision upon inspection whether any other improvements are necessary prior to signing off on it.
Is your concern about the pipe material, concerned about corrosion?
If it's metal, it gets replaced as soon as it's done.
Is it possible for highway to wait until more like the fall, so that there doesn't have to be any major disturbance in that area?
It's where the timetable there is.
Because I think, I think that if we go in there and any habitat value that it has will be really diminished if it's disturbed.
If you're looking for an inspection pathway, how wide a strip would you like to see? 10 feet?
10 is more than that.
We need us to go through the, through what's marked currently as wetland, I'm assuming we can just go up to where the limit of the wetland is now?
I'm not even talking about just, I mean, just the whole area it was provided, even, I know there's wetland habitat, but the entire area that would be-
Let's just put it this way, wetland or no wetland, if that pipe fails, if it's metal and it's rotted out, we've got to go in there and replace it, period. So-
You should be able to tell right at the catch basin.
Yeah, I know, so I'm just saying, if possible, they could wait till November when the, when it's largely-
I have no objection to that, whatever is most reasonable.
I'll confer with my client, I believe if he's agree, he would want to do it sooner rather than later, but I'll confer with him and see what his timetable will be.
Just a recommendation.
What are the conditions for that 10-foot strip? Is that going to be-
I'm sorry?
What are the conditions for that 10-foot strip? And by the way, I assume that's five feet on either side of the pipe?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's, is that supposed to be like a maintenance agreement, or is it just-
No, no, what Scott is saying, they need to be able to inspect the pipe and it's emergency, and you can't do that at the site right now.
Make sure there's no sinkholes or joints pulled apart, whatever, that we know what we're getting into with the grid.
Right.
So Scott, why can't we just have them dig it up where the catch basin, the other catch basin is the other side of the catch basin?
Should be able to tell right in the catch basin. Couldn't?
It's deep enough and it's offset behind, you can see what's coming into the one structure, which is not even that structure, but it's thick, I mean, you can't, it's not going.
But what if we went to the other catch basin and just had them open it out there?
It's possible if you go down in there.
That's what I'm saying. What if that's what they did, rather than coming up close to the wetlands, they could do it up at the-
That still doesn't mean that there's no pipe joints pulled apart, there's no sinkholes along the way, you know? Tell you what-
Send the camera down.
If they want to send the camera, that's an option.
But I'm sorry, back to-
Probably a cheaper solution.
Ease, into perpetuity, I mean, I assume that that's going to be a 10-foot easement. It's not an easement.
It shows on the plan as an existing 30-foot drainage, centered on the pipe.
Okay, thank you.
The plans also show it as HDP pipe throughout the whole network in here, so.
Yeah, we just need verification. Nobody was, I wasn't allowed when they put it in, so.
So what I'd like you to do is coordinate with our town professionals with whatever you determine you're going to do, but we don't want you mowing the wetlands. So one or the other, wait until November where the vegetation has died off and then they can see it, or do the thing with the camera and the catch basins or something like that, but you shouldn't mow through those wetlands, that's not appropriate.
I'll pop that side more.
Okay, but it'd go pretty good distance on both sides, just stay out of that.
Well, if you needed to see, you said you needed to see the whole thing to see if there's a sink placed or something like that, so if they run the camera through it, then that's not going to invade. That seems like it's probably actually the quickest thing to do, too, but, all right. So confirm the pipe material and the condition of the pipe with the town officials, please work with our town officials, so if we want to be out there at the site and see what's going on, we can be.
Sure.
And then Scott, was there anything else with regard to the pipe? I'm assuming if we decide it needs to be replaced, would you want to replace it in this spot, or would you pipe it out and get it out and around the wetland? Because that was the other thing we talked about, was it almost doesn't matter what the current condition is if we're going to pipe it out and pass where those wetlands are.
That's absolutely correct, if that's on the table, rerouting it, you wouldn't be concerned.
I would highly recommend that, because otherwise you're going to be, you may be maintaining the pipe and you'd have to get a wetland permit from the Army Corps every time you went in there to do anything.
The town would.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be a nightmare.
Which is what we would have to do right now, anyway. So. So Joe, I know you had some concern about the topography, whether or not you could get the rise that you needed. Have we looked at that?
Yeah, there was, you know, from the one catch basin to the other, it would, you know, just be that much greater distance, like two legs of a triangle. I didn't actually run the numbers, though. I think it was something we kind of looked at preliminarily, it was, it would probably make it like the minimum slope of a half a percent, if I had to guess, because right now it's like nine tenths of a percent, so it's-
Yeah, it's pointing to getting close. Then you're just making that last leg that much flatter, because there is 36-inch pipe, so it was designed to convey some substantial flows.
So again, Scott, we talked about having, having a joint, getting it out, and then running it along Warren Farms, Warren Farm, excuse me, road, and that would keep it out of the wetlands entirely.
And I think the only, the only question I have about is whether or not the pipe currently is providing any hydrology to the wetland itself, because it's perforated, as there's water going into the wetland, because it runs through that area, so whether or not that hydrology can be maintained if the pipe is routed, and that may be something that you can answer or not.
Well, if it's perforated, shown on the original plans, you would think that it would reduce the amount of wetland viability by virtue of being able to drain it. If anything, the wetland is existing on top of a perforated pipe.
Which says something about your water table there.
Well, it's relatively high.
So Joe, is there, is there a difference if we went to a non-perforated pipe versus a perforated pipe, or if we did put the joint in and run it out to Warren Farm Road, or?
I have to look at the plan again, but I think by the time it got to the 36-inch, I think it stopped being perforated. The perforated was on the smaller sections, if I remember right. So it probably wouldn't matter as much if it got routed.
So we don't think this pipe started that way, anyway? It may be that way now, but it didn't start that way?
No, I think the main line, the largest diameter, is not shown perforated.
Okay.
There could have been an underdrain in that area, though.
And you'd also have the trench backfill. If it's backfilled with stone, you'd think that would also act like a, like a curtain drain, almost.
If a daylight enters something, otherwise it just gets trapped.
Right.
The letter said, it seems to indicate, the Morris letter number three, seems to indicate that all the pipe information was provided. So I guess we want to add condition. We're still not sure of the condition of the pipe?
Right, I was referring to a prior comment we were asking about the rim, the slope, the sizes, all of that particular information, they did add. Yeah, it looks like the 36-inch pipe, it says with underdrain, but it stops calling it perforated, HDP.
Yeah, that last line is 36-inch HPE with an underdrain, they probably couldn't obtain it in a perforated form 20, 25 years ago, so they added a, I believe the original plans called for a four-inch perforated underdrain to run alongside the pipe and next to it, and then it would tie in either regular intervals into the pipe or at the end structure near Warren Farm.
So folks that know this drainage stuff way better than I do, what is our best next step here, knowing that we probably, regardless of where we end up, we don't want town drain running through a wetland, because that's going to be difficult for us to maintain? Do we just want to say investigate getting it out to Warren Farm and running it into that culvert along the side of the road?
And I mean, I also think we're, that the Army Corps is going to have a lot to say about how this gets designed when they review it, because they're, they're obviously not going to accept a wetland mitigation that doesn't have the hydrology, so they're going to be looking at this in their design as well, and they may make some suggestions or tweaks. So this all has to, we have to make sure that they're getting all the current information and whatever we decide, because they're going to, they're going to come in and ultimately approve or disapprove there, that portion of it as well.
Did you call out to Army Corps that there is an existing drain running underneath this right now?
Yeah, we, they have all the as-built and existing survey information that the, that the town has.
So they, I mean, they'll be looking at the design as well?
So I guess Scott and Joe, I'm looking for your direction. If you think it's better to try to re-pipe out around the wetland, then I'd rather us go that route, rather than spending a lot of money trying to figure out what the pipe looks like.
Well, that's definitive. I mean, if you just reroute it, then we don't have to inspect it, we don't have to-
That's what I'm saying, so I-
That's a definitive plan right there. You can reroute it.
Okay.
Because Dennis won't commit until he can get out there and feel and touch it, see what he's got.
And I don't blame him for that, I mean, that seems reasonable, especially in an area like this, because it's going to be a nightmare if something goes wrong, so, okay. So are we comfortable that rerouting is better to keep the pipe out of the wetland?
Oh, we're going to do any removal.
If it's physically possible to engineer it?
I think so, because let me quickly draw, like, how, where would the new pipe go, then?
I don't have a thing, but you can just-
How do you do that?
You can just take it and angle the pipe up towards Warren Farm Road and then run it along. Sorry. Try not to blind anybody. People don't usually let me have these, just so you know.
For a reason.
I mean, I don't know whether you run it straight from here out to the road and then along, or whether you put a joint, you know, another something here and run it up, and I don't know what engineering-wise works, but I think if you can get the pipe itself to not come through the wetland, that's the important thing, if we can get out to the road above the wetland and then along, is what I'm going to, thank you.
I was a chill over here.
Does the old pipe get removed? Does the old pipe get removed?
No.
I think you should just imagine it in place, right?
You could lay a bulkhead on either end and ban it in place, sure. If it's plastic.
Because again, you want to do as little disturbance to that existing wetland as you possibly can.
Is that gravity?
It's planted, it's put a gap on the ends.
I didn't catch that.
Is it all the gravity, is it all gravity, does it pitch?
Yeah, at about 20%.
Yeah, the existing is about nine tenths of a percent grade. And that would also entail modifying the existing drainage that the town has.
Correct.
Right.
And it'll also be more pipe that the town would have to maintain if that's the course of action that we ultimately take.
Right, but the difference of not having to maintain it through a wetland seems appropriate. Scott, I'm trusting you're going to speak up if you have a concern with that, but that seems to me like a better way to go, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's see if we can figure that part out.
Okay.
And again, I'm looking, you guys will tell us whether you can make angles and whatever work. I don't have the technical terms today, I'm sorry, they're escaping me. I know they're out there. All right, what else with this one? Michelle, I know we were, we looked a lot at the fill pads that are there, and I think we've, we've come to the conclusion that we can't specifically pinpoint exactly what happened when, so with the wetland reclamation and keeping the size of the existing wetlands the same, are we comfortable that the lot layouts the way they are are appropriate, or are there other changes we should be talking about for the actual layout of the lots?
I mean, I think, I think for me, the issue is whether or not the layout of the lots ultimately affect the hydrology and the functioning of the wetland, and that will, I think, be determined via this process and also via the Army Corps' review of the wetland mitigation. But my other comments I had, because they are proposing as part of the wetland mitigation that they're going to get rid of the phragmities, and I think they're actually talking about possibly burning it, so the applicant needs to provide some sort of invasive species control plan that's in compliance with all appropriate phragmities management guidance and regulations, and that should also consider any and all applicable regulations related to outdoor burning, local, and if there's any state, I don't know if there's any state regulations regarding burning in the wetland, and I don't know how Army Corps is going to, can't deal with that as well. And then also that the wetland mitigation plan should include provisions for monitoring the wetland mitigation area for a minimum of five years to ensure that it is functioning and that all invasive species control plan that's in compliance with all appropriate phragmities management guidance and regulations, and that should also consider any and all applicable regulations related to outdoor burning, local, and if there's any state, I don't know if there's any state regulations regarding burning in the wetland, and I don't know how Army Corps is going to, can't deal with that as well. And then also that the wetland mitigation plan should include provisions for monitoring the wetland mitigation area for a minimum of five years to ensure that it is functioning and that all invasive-
come to the conclusion that we can't specifically pinpoint exactly what happened when. So with the wetland reclamation and keeping the size of the existing wetlands the same, are we comfortable that the lot layouts the way they are are appropriate? Or are there other changes we should be talking about for the actual layout of the lots?
I mean, I think, for me, the issue is whether or not the layout of the lots ultimately affect the hydrology and the functioning of the wetland. And that will, I think, be determined via this process and also via the Army Corps' review of the wetland mitigation. But my other comments I had, because they are proposing as part of the wetland mitigation that they're going to get rid of the phragmites, and I think they're actually talking about possibly burning it. So the applicant needs to provide some sort of invasive species control plan that's in compliance with all appropriate phragmites management guidance and regulations. And they should also consider any and all applicable regulations related to outdoor burning, local and if there's any state, I don't know if there's any state regulations regarding burning in the wetland. And I don't know how Army Corps is going to, can't deal with that as well. And then also that the wetland mitigation plan should include provisions for monitoring the wetland mitigation area for a minimum of five years to ensure that it is functioning and that all invade, that the invasives have not returned. Because we need to make sure that the plants actually take whatever they plant in there and that the area that isn't currently wetland is getting the water.
That it needs.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that just in the lot on the, sorry, west side of the property? Or would that also be up in the other wetland? I know the middle one is being filled in, but the one up in the far east?
I think they should.
Those two are being left, well, this one is being removed in its entirety. That one's being left as is.
Okay.
All the.
So you're not proposing to remove the phragmites from it?
No, because if we do that, that's, would count as additional disturbance going into that wetland. We'd rather leave that one alone. If we're going to have a fence around it to cordon it off, our client's willing to do that. But there's no additional things I think we need to do to that upper lot because all the disturbance is going to be here and it's going to be relocated down to that area.
So how, and I just don't know enough about that plant, but that particular species, how far can it migrate when it's jumping over non-wetland area? I mean, does it, do its seeds blow?
It's pretty prolific. I mean, you've seen it, you've seen Newark Airport, it's everywhere.
Well, I mean, if we're going to go through the effort of burning and improving and doing whatever we're doing here with these other wetlands, I mean, do we say?
I think they need, I think they need to show us an appropriate plan to see how they're, explain how they're going to do that.
And how we're going to ensure that this same species doesn't end up taking over again. Okay.
Is that going to include, I'm sorry, is that going to include like initial planting?
Yes, any plantings that they would put in, the wetland plantings that they would install, sometimes, one of the issues with wetland mitigation in the past has been that a lot of times they'll plant the plants and they don't take. And that's why you have the monitoring period for five years, because you need to make sure that they get the water they need.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Army Corps permit, that's ultimate issue, is going to have its window for monitoring. I believe it's five years, it may have modified slightly over the last couple of years. We'll know exactly what it is when we actually get the permit in hand.
And then I don't know.
So I'm still asking, is it appropriate not, I mean, I'm assuming the wetland that you're going to get rid of, you will burn whatever phragmites is there, is that correct?
Yeah, those will be taken care of in place.
Okay.
When, and then the mucky soils that are unsuitable for building or for lot.
And then the phragmites that are down in your reclamation area would also be burned?
Correct.
So I guess I'm still trying to figure out why the third area we wouldn't also improve that. I'm just, I want to.
They would have to, I mean, they'd have to explain how they're going to handle that. I think that is an issue potentially, that if, you know, if there's phragmites there, it may just come right back in the next year. I mean, this stuff grows so quickly.
Okay.
So they'd have to.
So you have some sort of mitigation plan that's going to say how you're going to try to keep that phragmites from jumping down into your new wetland or your reclaimed wetland?
We don't currently, but I'll discuss that with Mike Nowicki and find out how he would suggest addressing that.
I understand what you're saying about not wanting to go into additional wetland area, but to me, I mean, I don't know how you prevent that plant from coming into the new area if you don't get rid of it.
It would have to travel quite a distance. It'd be traveling all the way from the one corner, either by air or whatever method to go from here all the way down to here.
Construction vehicle?
That's not.
Car?
It's not. It's a hop, skip, and a jump.
It's made it from New York to California.
Strong wind. I mean, I don't know how, I don't know if it's got seeds or whether it's all just by the root system or it's got seeds.
Yeah, okay. All right. The, and then the only other question I have, and you may have already addressed this, I know that because the Army Corps is involved, the Fish and Wildlife Service and the Indiana Bat, did you get a letter? You did?
Yes, we did. That was in part of the packet that we had sent you previously.
Okay, so I might have just missed it.
Yeah, it was in that large thing. And basically they said, the only thing that Fish and Wildlife said there may be on the property is Indiana Bat, because it's been documented within 2.5 miles of the subject property. And in Mike's Threat and Dangerous Species Habitat Suitability Assessment Report, he is of the opinion that the Indiana Bat, the conclusion, there are no wooded areas on the property and no edge habitat for the species, therefore it's unlikely that Indiana Bats could utilize these parcels.
I would agree with that. I just wanted to make sure there were no turtles out there.
He did mention the bog turtle because it's kind of standard, and he's, his conclusion there, bog turtles do not occur on the parcels or within sight of the parcels.
How's he know then? He looked.
It's not on the, is it on the NHP letter from DEC? There's nothing on it.
No, this was in his report, the actual NHP letter didn't mention, only mentioned the Indiana Bat.
Okay.
It didn't mention bog turtles. Most projects in Dutchess County, they look for New England Cotton Tail, Indiana Bat, bog turtle, and some, in some areas of the county, Landings Turtle, if that's a refuge. Further south, if they're up on the mountains, they would, you know, he would just by default list the Timber Rattler.
I'm sorry, so he says there are no bog turtles there?
Yes.
Based on?
There was no hit on the, in the New York State database for having any turtle habitat in that area.
Okay. Thank you. That was what I was asking.
So I'm back again to the layout of these lots. How do we determine that this is appropriate? Where, how does that happen in this process, knowing what we're going through with reclamation of wetlands and that sort of thing? And Michelle, I guess I'm looking at you because I know we're filling in wetlands to get a lot and we're doing some other things, so I just want to make sure we're not, we're not putting more lots here than we could or should based on what's being proposed with the reclamation area and the current site conditions.
I mean, I would, I mean, I think I did say in some of my previous letters that we might want to consider reducing the lot count for this very reason, because there is some wetland disturbance that really can't be avoided as a result of the way lots are laid out. And I think during the site visit, the applicant proposed increasing the wetland mitigation area to hopefully avoid having to lose one of the lots. I think that was the idea.
But I'm still hearing it's a one for one, so I'm not hearing that that was increased, so. When we did our site inspection, well, we were very concerned that it seems, and you can actually kind of see it from the fact that wetlands don't normally have straight lines for their borders, you can clearly see that there's been a lot of fill brought into the site. So what we suggested was, especially knowing that we would hopefully move the pipe out of the wetland area, if we could expand that, the remediation area that you're talking about to actually provide some additional wetland than what's there today, the lot layout probably works a little better. But short of that, if you were to be able to remove one of those lots, you might not even need to lose part of that wetland up in the middle. I can't remember if that C or, is it Wetland C, I think is the middle one?
You mean the one right here?
Yeah.
I think just where its location is, this lot would impact it, and this lot would impact it by virtue of horizontal separation requirements we need to have between the sewage disposal systems and the wetland itself.
If those two were only one lot, would you have to disturb that wetland to be able to fit a house on it in the septic?
Yes, you would.
Why?
Because if you go from the base of the fill pad, you go 100 feet this way, and the base of this fill pad, 100 feet this way, there'd be a little tiny sliver of that lot remaining, even if you just took one or the other. You're still going to have, the bulk of this wetland have to be removed.
So there wouldn't be a way to reposition it within that area or to redraw those lot lines to be able to fit, instead of two there, just one?
No, not with the 100 foot off, so you'd have, you'd have some impact to the wetland, no matter how you tried to reshape it.
Even if you shaped the other lots around it?
We'd have to, we'd have to take a look at that.
Okay. So I just think we wanted to see something to show that we were either improving, I understand you're doing a one for one swap, we were looking for more of an improvement versus the one for one swap. And I understand the quality issue, so that is a good thing.
And the one to one swap also includes a number of additional plantings that are going in.
I understand the quality issue, yeah, and getting rid of the invasive species, at least I'm part of it. But it would be better, and especially if we're taking that drain pipe out of the mix and we're kicking it up onto the road, I think you've got a little bit more area to work with too, in order to improve that wetland.
That's what they will look at.
And Michelle, I know we're probably within the right date for the inspection, but didn't it seem like the wetland itself was bigger, just based on the plant vegetation out there?
Yeah, I mean, we were out there, I think it was June 30th. I mean, they're going from the, where he found the soils, the hydrology, and, you know, there's.
Okay. Even though it had the same plants?
Different people can dilate different lines and they can all be right based on.
But these lines were re-inspected and they're all within their date for.
These lines, these lines are the Army Corps of Engineers lines.
Yeah, these were, these were the lines that we were out there for, with the Army Corps a couple of years ago. Yeah, I was there that day.
Yeah, Mike was there, Brian Orzal from Army Corps.
This was agreed upon.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just a couple other things in my notes and then circulate for other questions. Because of this sensitive area and because of what you're doing out here, we would typically, on residential, we may not have an environmental monitor, but I think you're going to need one at this site, at least for, depending where you're building at the time and what you're doing on site. So we'll need to work through having an environmental monitor, especially as you're working in and around these wetland areas that are going to survive.
Okay, what would that entail?
Normally we have you, you have an escrow with the town and we set up a monitoring schedule with you and we estimate the cost of what the monitoring would be over the length of time that you'll need it. So whether they're out there once a week or twice a week, and the number of weeks we think that's going to be necessary, they estimate the cost of that. And you have an escrow that pays that.
And who does the actual monitoring?
The town appoints someone to do that. And then I think, Tom, I think we talked about this during the site inspection, but knowing that the Army Corps is going to need to come on site on this lot where they're doing the remediation, is there something specific we put into the deed so that a residential property owner understands that somebody's going to be walking around their backyard or side yard?
Correct. They normally like the DC requires there would be a description of the boundaries of wetlands and that be recorded into the chain of title.
Yeah, it would be like a restrictive covenant in the deed, instead of a full formal easement to the town, it's fish, it'll just be restrictive covenant that went.
I also think you have to check with DC because our, my understanding is once a town's population of 20,000 or more, you can't have open burning within the town. So if the Army Corps or your experts tell you you can burn in place, I think you have to see what DC has to say about that because we're, open burning is prohibited in the town. I don't know if there's exceptions that the DC could admit for it, but you better check that.
And then I guess specifically, Tom, I understand what you're saying about the deed covenant, but just so that, I don't know what we do to make sure a resident understands that somebody may be walking around their property and if something fails here, that there may be construction going on in the wetland to fix it. So I don't know how we explain that to a homeowner, but it's, this isn't like the normal wetland where we're just staying out of it and not disturbing it.
Then if you're, if there's going to have to be any maintenance or active maintenance, you have to perhaps have a, go in water district or something like that to maintain. I mean, usually wetlands are passive, once they're built, they're there, nobody touches them, no one has to maintain them, so we're not usually doing.
Right, but I think in this case, we felt that the Army Corps was going to be monitoring and if the plant, new plantings failed, there probably have to be some remediation, additional remediation.
Well, who's the Army Corps going to require to do that?
They might leave that up to the, owner might leave it up to the municipality. I have to check and see what their.
Yeah, but the obligation will be, because if there's affirmative obligation on our part, then we're going to look to do some sort of district or have that lot covered by an agreement that they have to do.
But just something more formal.
Yeah, town's not just going to take on.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is that we, because it's a remediation and reclamation.
Normally the wetlands we deal with, it's just a matter of keeping people out, making them aware.
Right, right, this goes beyond that. Sorry.
How does this plan work? I mean, do we come in and just completely like re-dig and kind of level what's there? Or is this like a, you try to preserve the existing wetland and?
Well, the areas where the new wetland is going to be created, you typically dig down 12 to 18 inches of the existing material, remove it, stockpile it, and you replace that with material that you're taking from the other wetland that we're removing. So in other words, the top 12 to 18 inches of the muck would be transferred down to here and be spread, and then you basically just swap the two.
How do we stop the phragmites then from coming with it?
It's very difficult, it's a very, very difficult idea. This is partly why they have so much trouble with wetland remediation, but, I mean, they have to, because wetland soils take so, such a long time to occur, you have to use, as wetland soils are part of why you have the wetland there to begin with, so you have to have wetland soils in the area.
Do you actually burn the soil to make sure that the phragmites go away and then re?
I'm not sure exactly how that works. You probably just hand cut the invasive, depending on how dense it is, and you, you know, I'm just told you burn them in place. Now, I don't know if that takes care of root structures or anything like that, but.
He just needs to provide us with some sort of details on how it works and.
Have you done that with the Army Corps already? Do you have a plan that we could look at or have you?
I have not seen that particular.
He probably has, I mean, people do wetland mitigation all the time, so he probably has, you know.
Like a standard process?
Standard procedure.
Swamp under construction.
If I have, I could ask Mike and see if he's done one.
Okay.
The other question I had is, there was a mention of a well in one of the letters. Where's the well that sits in the middle of one of these wetlands?
The drinking, you mean the water supply well? There's an existing well for Lot 12D, that's an existing well that was dug during Phase One of the projects, it's one of the test wells. And there's another existing drilled well for 5A.
Okay.
And the well for 5B is actually over here.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I thought, reading the note, I came away with the impression that it was sitting actually inside the wetland and.
I think the problem is that it's inside the buffer.
Okay.
And so technically you can. And a fence wasn't closing that area, so we were saying.
Yeah, that'd be the one for 12D up here at the top. Because the fence runs from here down, across, and then back. So yes, that well, existing well, that would be within that split rail fence and the restrictive covenant.
So what is the plan for that?
So what do they do if they have a problem?
They would have to go in and just take care of the well. If, they're just talking if they had an issue with repairing the well or drilling a new one?
What do we do, we tell Mid-Ats to tip down or something? Or what do we, how do you maintain a well that's in there? I mean, they can't get the truck?
That particular one is right off the shoulder.
Right off the shoulder of the road, they can, they can drive the rig right on the shoulder of Warren Farm Road.
Is that well in the road right of way? Or is it outside the road right of way?
The well?
It's outside.
It's outside.
Yeah, the wells, the well's definitely on our property.
It was just, they were showing a fence around the whole quadrant of the parcel, so we were just saying for the person to access their well to have a gate, or if they wanted to mow around their well.
But they can't do that because it's the wetland buffer.
All right, so they wouldn't mow around their well?
That's not ours. It's not up to us, right?
No, and they should still be allowed access to their well for switching out a pump or something.
Is there another location that this well could be placed where it's outside of the wetland buffer?
For that lot, I don't, I don't think so. I can, I can check, but based upon my familiarity with it, I don't think there is because the way this is, that well, because it's downgrade of the septic system, you need to have a longer, a greater horizontal separation.
So Michelle, in practical terms, what is this, a DEC permit to allow a resident access to their well?
This is, this is not, there's no DEC wetlands out here. This isn't, the wetlands are all Army Corps regulated wetlands and actually town regulated. What happened with this is that we, A-Carif went out, looked at the wetlands and decided that they were really connected, they were not isolated wetlands. and decided that they were really connected, they were not isolated wetlands. And the applicant at the time did not agree with us, they want, they said they were isolated. So he said, okay, fine, we'll have the Army Corps come out, give us a jurisdictional determination, and whatever they decide, we'll go with, one way or the other. Well, Army Corps came out and agreed with us that they were connected, which is why Army Corps even took jurisdiction of them. Otherwise, they would've considered them isolated, and they wouldn't have bothered. And they, so, they took jurisdiction of them, and as a result, as far as the town is concerned, it would be adding all three of the, of the wells together to form one size, and that's what ultimately is the size and the buffer that would be applied from the town. I believe it's like 25 feet, because it's not a very large wetland, I think it's like a happy girl, totally. Individually, each of those wetlands would not have been regulated by the town, but we, we consider them all as one wetland.
But my question is, how do we permit a resident to knowingly go into a wetland buffer to maintain their well?
You give them a permit.
We can give, yeah, you give them a permit to do it, make the disturbance.
Permit has conditions, but what they...
So we're gonna have to condition that this lot comes along with a, in perpetuity, wetland buffer...
And who monitors that?
Permit.
Then we monitor that?
No, because if you have to replace your well, you go to Board of Health for a new well permit, you don't go to the town. We would know if someone drilled a new one.
Yeah.
Don't forget, excuse me, if it's under the Army Corps jurisdiction, they're vested with authority by Congress to enforce it under their ten. We take care of town, once D.C. takes care of state, once...
Yeah, all right.
So, so Michelle just said that the town sets the buffer area.
The buffer area is set because the Army Corps doesn't require a buffer around their wetlands. But our wetlands ordinance says that if it's not required, a buffer's not required by the regulatory authority, the town imposed, I think, a 50-foot buffer around those wetlands. So that, in that regard, the 50-foot buffer is created under the town law, we then have jur, you have jurisdiction to grant permits to allow certain activities within a buffer, although they are discouraged, or a well, or something like that.
So could we...
So the Army Corps doesn't have anything to do with that?
So what I'm getting at is, I would like...
Or we not have anything to do with the well.
What I'm getting at is, I would like to then make sure that this plan does not put the well inside the fencing of the buffer, and that we include a permit that allows them to operate around their well.
Do you recommend the...
Yeah, absolutely. I know it seems silly, but I can't see setting up a situation where somebody's gonna unknowingly go in and do this.
But that would be, would that be hard, when we give approval, and it's delineating the boundaries of the wetland?
Well, the other alternative here is to have fewer lots, so that there's space to put a well in a different location. That's what I'm trying to figure out, whether that's the more appropriate solution, or whether there's something we can do here as the town to...
I mean, I will say that there's an awful lot of, what I'll, just for lack of a better term, gerrymandering on the site to make it, to make it work, including the fill that was ultimately brought in over time, so that they could build on these lots.
I think the two big issues is, number one, what's gonna be needed to supervise or maintain this man-made wetlands? And number two, can the removal of the...
Phragmities.
Phragmities be done in the method that his experts proposed? I think those are crucial things before we do much more.
So...
If you can't burn it, what do you do?
But we haven't seen, we haven't, in fairness to the applicant, we haven't seen their proposal for handling the phragmities yet.
I think, along with that, we also need to resolve whether or not we can physically get the pipe out to the road, and out from the, the middle of the wetlands, because really, ideally, I'd like to see the wetland be larger and be made more robust, if possible.
And an option for removing one lot? How are they able to handle that?
Yeah, I think maybe an alternative layout, where you don't have anything in any of the buffers, and either you don't have to remove the one wetland, or some other alternative.
Well, I'll have to discuss that with my client.
Okay. Have you, if you have the plan that you're proposing to Army Corps, if you can get us a copy of it, so we can review it, and then if you can be specific with what, what you're able to do with the phragmities, because I think we need to figure that out. They're fairly robust out there.
Mm-hmm.
And Tom, I'm sorry, you said phragmities remediation, and something about the man-made wetlands, I...
Well, it was indication that, once they create this wetland, they may have to have some maintenance and...
Oh, the plan, right, okay. Maintenance plan and inspection plan for the, for the wetlands, once you've rebuilt, or built whatever you're gonna build out there.
And I believe that would be spelled out in the terms of the permit issued by Army Corps.
Yeah, okay. So do we have to wait for Army Corps to issue the permit, or can we see what...
Well, I mean, it's wise, because Army Corps may come back with conditions that you guys would not wanna have on the plan. Like, you, we don't know what Army Corps is gonna say.
Remember, we had this on a, a probia granted, a two-lot subdivision to Turtle, which is missing from that side, which may be over here by Frank. But there were extensive active conditions, and the applicant had to not only record that, I guess, promptly, I think we were quite modestly, and responded to make sure it's...
Right, okay.
I mean, hopefully, they've been, I know they've been working with Army Corps for a long time on this, so hopefully, we'll have some sort of permit before we get to the point where we need to make a decision, but we may not.
Okay. So I think we want to nail down what we can do with the pipe. Have something from you about your phragmities reclamation, uh, sorry, phragmities destruction plan, and your wetland reclamation plan, and if there's an alternate layout that keeps you out of these wetlands, even if it's fewer lots, I think we'd like to see that, including where the wells are not located, and the buffer areas too.
And the lot layout. Because again, we've had that, again, we've asked to see an alternate lot layout, right?
That was a...
Yeah. But I just wanna make sure, because, because we've tripped over that before, where we'll go back and discuss it, and come back, and there isn't an alternative proposed, and that became a hang-up for a while.
Joe, anything else we need to go over?
I think we've covered most of it, but I think the alternate layout is something the town has kind of reserved on any project, that could ask for up to three alternatives, pretty much in the early stages of the, of a project. I forget how many, I think it's, once you're above five lots, I think you're supposed to give up to three alternatives, so...
Michelle, anything else? Brendan?
We didn't formally review the project, but I guess the only general comments I'd make about, you know, indicating the driveway's existence out of plan, and, and if any of the, you know, the driveways could be lined up opposite the road, the toes would just go by.
And then if that pipe does run along Warren Farm Road, is there anything that we need to, from your perspective, anything we would do if the pipe is moved there? Or just wait for the highway department to take it?
Yeah, right, as long as it's in the, in the right-of-way of the road, probably.
Okay.
A good idea, or any of that's good.
The alternate pipe route, would the board prefer to see it in the right-of-way, and off of private property?
We definitely prefer to see it out of the wetlands, and I, Scott, I guess I would defer to you or the highway department as far as where it would be located, if it's running along the road.
Practically, I don't know that you can get, is it gonna be too long a run to maintain any kind of ditch?
It, it might be, I'd have to do the, I'd have to run the map on it.
Must be a reason why this was created, to know why there was, there was an alternate value.
I think there may have been additional lots...
Might not have been wetlands at the time.
Originally, I think there may have been original lots originally envisioned in this area here, under the original...
It was a different layout at the time.
It's different, but both on the original side. We have quite a cutting through, but...
Yeah, but you just might, there was a closed lot there, and that would be back in line.
Yeah, Lot 12 and Lot 5, they're the remainder of, I believe, seven or eight other lots that were originally envisioned for this lower section, but were never able to be approved because of insufficient percolation rates, so they're never able to get any DOH approval for them. So instead, 5 was reserved as one larger lot, and 12 was reserved as a larger lot. The original lot count, I believe, the numbers went up to 30. I think they got 23 total out of it. So the remaining seven would have been in this area. So I believe there was a lot right there at the corner, which is why the pipe would cut through there. And at the time, there was no wetlands identified on the property.
There was no wetland law, local wetland law?
Okay.
Laurie, I just, we, we did have some drainage comments, nothing really significant. I mean, they did perform an analysis, and they were able to show the disturbances that remain under five acres. So they weren't quite brought into full sweep, but we did have some related drainage comments. I'm thinking if the layout should change, if they reduce lots, the impervious cover would probably decrease, and the disturbance would likely decrease, so... So it might make sense for him to defer addressing most of those until the layout gets nailed down.
Pretty good. Do you have any other questions for us?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Eagle Ridge landscaping plan at Katie's Way and Glenn's Way. Oh, sir, I'm, I'm sorry, can we ask your name? I apologize, we didn't catch you for the minutes.
I'm sorry, Christian Moore?
Christian Moore?
Christian Moore from Casey Engineering?
I have cards, I've been, I've been in them.
If you don't mind, yeah, for our minutes, just so we capture you correctly. Thank you, and I apologize, I should've asked you that in the beginning. Hello?
We're here tonight to talk about the landscaping plan that was originally approved as part of the Eagle Ridge project. What we're asking for is these trees up in this area, and in this area. Right now, it's pretty well overgrown, and the contractor's been in touch, excuse me, with some of the existing owners, and they've expressed an interest to not cut trees to plant trees. So we're here tonight to see what the board thinks about that. Basically, this area here is pretty well wooded, this area here is wooded as well. There was improvements made years ago, which since overgrown, and in order to get these trees in here, it would require getting through the lots. So what we're asking for is if the, you know, the board would consider possibly omitting those from the plan, and just leaving the plan intact with the balance of the proposed landscaping.
So I, I know we had asked someone, and Scott, I don't know if somebody from your group, and Michelle went out to see the property?
I was there today, actually.
What kind of quality are we talking about, the existing trees?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get up, 'cause I have to point.
Okay.
I have a point.
Michelle, just try to grab the mic if you would, so we can, we can still hear you.
Can I, can I talk into that?
Uh, I don't know, is that live?
Can you point?
That's not on, that's not on.
Pretend you're a lounge act, okay?
So, 4, 5, and 6, well, 6 in particular has a deep lawn that goes back, basically, to the edge of the woods, and the edge of the woods is mainly vines, shrubs, ferns, you know, kind of looks like an overgrown side of the road, almost. I couldn't, there's a riprap swell that's shown here, but this doesn't exist on the site. There's no swell, riprap here, or here, and then there is riprap here, but it's supposed to be a grass swell. So I wasn't actually able to tell, like, how, where I kind of was on the lot, although there was a marker here, so I, I was assuming that where I was standing was this marker, but I'm not 100% sure that's true. So, do I think that any of these plants would provide any visual buffering for the site? No, because there's a pretty thick area of woods...
We, we certainly intend it to be evergreen.
Um, it's all deciduous. And I did, I did drive down and, around the cul-de-sac, and tried to peek through here to see, and, and certainly, in the wintertime, you will probably be able to see the ridge line, but the houses are so far away, I don't think you'd see much in the way of the disturbance on the site. So, and also, just for clarification, all the proposed landscaping here is shrub landscaping, so they weren't even trees to begin with. They were all, it's all like fire bush and juniper, and the tall, between five and six feet, so they weren't even deciduous trees to begin with. But, but I, you know, so, beyond that, there, the biggest issue, there's no...
So why, why is there the riprap there? Why isn't the swale there?
It was for drainage, drainage prevented from flowing towards the adjoining properties.
Right, so why isn't it there?
Oh, we made modifications to it over the years while we were building it, and we brought this, one of the swales down this way, and, I mean, there's, we developed all this.
But there is a swell, right? Isn't there a swell there?
There's a swell here, but not here, at all, and...
No, there's, there's a substantial swell there, because...
I have pictures.
Well...
There's no swell there.
Well, you can confirm, my understanding is, so if you look at it, it kind of runs with the contours, whereas when you get down to the lower leg, it's cross-contour, so it's much steeper?
Yes, but...
And I understand that the riprap is installed there, we really need to be...
It's, it's installed here, but there's no riprap here, yeah.
This was, because that was a very gradual grade, and it was eliminated.
This is grass from here down.
So is there a grass swell there, Michelle?
There's a stone wall there.
I didn't see any swell, but it's pretty thickly overgrown. I can show you pictures, I have pictures, I took pictures, and I sat there, and, but, I mean, regardless of, however it works, it's just not, the, the plan is not correct. So that needs to be fixed. And then also, I, I went and checked these lots here, and, again, I don't, I don't believe that the, the landscaping would provide any visual buffering, because there's a pretty thick area of trees in here, and again, it's, it's shrubs, but there is space, you know, there's certainly space to plant it, and you wouldn't really have to remove, I mean, in here, you would probably have to remove some of the, what I would call the scrub, in order to get the trees, and, and I don't know that there's any value to doing that, unless the landowners themselves wanted to have flowering dogwood, or whatever it is, it's not flowering dogwood, it's like some dogwood shrub, and juniper, and burning bush within some of the plants that were located here. So the only question is whether or not any of the landowners, and Mark's saying that a lot of them don't want, and I can understand that, because there would have to be some sort of disturbance to get back in here. It's not the easiest thing to get back in here. So whether or not they would want these planted, you know, it would probably be up to them. And so I guess I would, I would recommend that the planning board consider at least notifying the neighbors that that, that the revision to the plan is being made.
Are all these lots developed and occupied?
No, these, these are not.
Their souls are not, they're not developed.
Okay.
15 and 16 were not, and so we also went down here, and these, these two were developed, and these two are not, so they're wooded all the way to the edge. And then there's a, there's a, you know, a pretty substantial swell here that leads into this area. And so, I mean, it's, it's just a question of whether or not the landowners are anticipating that they're getting these trees here. But while I was out there, I also did observe that this landscaping, and this landscaping is not installed, and none of this landscaping around the stormwater basin is installed.
Okay.
Is there a reason for that?
We're just waiting to finalize the road, and then put the landscaping in right after that. But I think you're running to a similar thing along Globe Branch there, that it's thick there right now, you have to clear that to plant that. You know, there's, there's communication lines that run on that side of the road.
Up here, up here, you mean?
Well, there's, there are some lines...
Well, down the whole, down the whole, like...
There's a lot of vines, and there's a, there is a couple of, there's a couple of evergreen trees, but I don't know what it looks like in the, in the wintertime. I'm not sure that there's any buffering at all in the wintertime.
Well, they should clear and put the plantings in, I mean, that's what we require.
So, so Mark, that's not part of this request, is it?
What you got right now is, if you drive by, it really acts as a shield, even though it's not pretty, it really blocks that hillside. If you clear it and plant this, you're gonna seep through that for a long time. Now, I don't have a preference, I'm just making you aware of it, that what's there now acts, acts as a natural buffer. If you clear and plant this, you're gonna look right through.
Is there any-
I would recommend a drive-by, that really, you know-
But these are, but all these trees are mainly evergreens that are going to be, these are trees, not shrubs, that we'd be planting along here, so it would take, you know, probably several years before they would reach mature height, but they are evergreens.
But they also got to be offset to utility lines out of there.
And there is, there's a utility line.
Why do we go through this effort on doing these landscape plans if they're not going to be done?
I'm not sure what the original intent of this landscaping was, I'm not sure it was-
Well, we're just going to say, okay, because what's there is good enough.
The original intent, the original intent of the-
We'll just make you aware that you're going to clear it, and you're going to go, like, wow, and see through it, and you can add these trees.
Well, then we need to do a better job of what's really there in the first place, than- How did this get approved in the first place? Who, what was the process?
Wait a minute, wait, let's, let's take a breath.
Us.
Let's take a breath. The trees behind the residential lots, the shrubberies, or whatever, we, we thought those lots would be cleared all the way to that point and past, so we wanted to make sure that before the scrub filled back in, there was something there to start to provide that visual buffer to the neighboring property owners. So if we're saying that that's no longer necessary, you know, that may make sense.
Well, I'll just kind of clarify-
But all of those neighbors on that side, there was a lot of them that came in and complained about it.
Yeah, so just to, just to clarify, it's pretty much cleared.
I was about to finish, yes, we would still want to make sure that everybody's in agreement that that's not going to be installed, both the current landowner and the people that we're going to be buffered by.
So, so just to be clear, the, I'm not exactly sure where on the lot, I think I was pretty much along the slot line, there's quite a bit of wooded area behind here that buffers these guys, that's really where the wooded area is, there's not, I don't believe so much left on this, there might be a line, but nonetheless, there's a buffer.
That was the intent on both sides, was that with the clearing that was going to go on for construction, we wanted to make sure there was something being installed to help provide that break, the visual break and the visual buffering for the adjoining lot owners. So I think you do need to have both sides of the equation, the current lot owner and the people behind them say, we don't want it, and then I'm inclined to say, fine.
Well, I'm going to add a caveat to that in a minute, but keep going.
Okay. My only other comment is, Michelle, and I don't know how much time you had today to be around the site, but is there any other area of the site that seems to need landscaping, where we could just repurpose these and put them somewhere else?
Well, I don't know that any landscaping has actually been installed on the site at all, I mean, I, there's, there was no landscaping here and here, I didn't check, I didn't go to anywhere beyond these lots.
There's none there. As I said, we're waiting to pave, and then put in the final landscaping.
Okay.
So, so Mark, is the front of the property part of this request, or not?
No, 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 the only thing I'm asking for is right here and right here.
Okay.
Everything else is, would remain in play.
Okay.
And I appreciate what Scott's saying, and I do agree, if you drive by there, I think you can appreciate what he's saying, it will take time, right now, you've got pretty-
But what's going to look better, that's my question? What you plant, or currently what's there?
Well, you know, I always go back-
Well, ultimately, long-term, sure, the new planting is going to look nicer.
Nice, yeah.
Long-term.
And it's hideous the way it is, as far as I'm concerned.
You've got to drive by and see what I initially said.
Well, with those kind of, I mean, it sounds like it's, it's only going to crest at about four or five feet tall, I mean-
Well, that's, that's these plants, these plants here are actually evergreen trees.
That's not an issue.
But that's not open to debate, right? That, the horse has left the barn, all we're talking about is those two sections.
Horse has left the barn, no.
They have plants in there.
All the barns are still closed, horse is inside.
Yeah, but he's not requesting any change.
He's not requesting anything, as long as we're talking about landscape.
We just have to expand it.
I disagree, I, I thought, well, the herb was, there was an approved plan, Mark could go off and plant these trees that are only going to be four or five feet tall, and-
So, again, the four or five feet tall is of the residential, the buffer up by the road is a very different type of buffer, different heights, different type of installation. Although, I agree, it's still going to be sparse in the beginning, because landscaping always is sparse in the beginning. So I guess, Mark or Michelle, I'm still asking the question, is there another place on the plan that could use beefing up in terms of landscaping, now that you've got things built out there that we didn't anticipate? Because I, I understand that there's maybe a place here that doesn't need it, but are there other places that you would put them instead?
It's sort of hard for me to say that, because there's no landscaping out there at all, so I would say that the entire site needs landscaping at this point, but I don't know what that would look like after the intended landscaping's installed.
Okay.
I mean, certainly, you could do it along the entrance roadway, would probably look nice, because there is a pretty large cut there, and then, and then, you know, a stormwater basin, so potentially, you could landscape along that entire-
Which cut? This, this is all rock.
Yeah, that's all rock.
I mean, you could go out there with a spoon, and you're on rock.
Well, this, this, you could landscape this and here, and there's one, two, three, four trees right now, proposed, so you could landscape along.
We are proposing landscaping along the barn.
Well, you've got this here, and you've got one, two, three, four trees, you don't have to manage.
But I have pipe there, I have storms here.
If you have an existing plan that was approved, I'm not sure why we would just automatically throw more trees on there, or things, because it was being decreased in another area.
Well, it's a field adjustment, it's a field adjustment, he's like, he's looking to diminish some trees in some areas, we may look back on it and say, well, maybe there's areas that need one tree, so I think it's more reasonable.
There's a difficult discussion for this kind of change.
Yeah, it's more reasonable.
We'd be happy to do that.
If it makes sense.
But I mean, if it makes sense, and I think, I mean, these, if, if, and I agree with Michelle, there are places we could probably sporadically put, they don't make any sense back here, they don't do anybody any good. This is pretty heavily wooded, I mean, these homes down in Dana Estates are way at the bottom of the hill, these houses are way out here, I remember the issue with the neighbors- They were complaining the most, yeah.
So do you have any, any problem with sending those neighbors and your existing residents just a letter saying, although we originally intended to plant this because the existing vegetation wasn't disturbed as we expected it to be, we're no longer going to do that, you have 30 days to respond, or something like that, if you have a concern?
What kind of letter of response do you think we're going to get from that?
But that's the thing, labs, if we just go ahead and say, no, don't put it in, and then they come in and say, well, how come it wasn't put in? Well, because we just said no.
Well, because we came back to the planning board, we filed law.
Yeah.
We came back to the planning board, and if the planning board felt it wasn't necessary, then we changed it, and that's what they would do if they were going to change something on their lot. Agreed? I'm doing-
They can't come to the planning board and ask us to have you change something.
Let's say this was a partial lot, and, and they were going to do something that I agreed to, I mean, I understand, but we're all going through the same-
I, I just remember the-
I agree, Jason, I remember the conversation.
Public hearing, after public hearing.
I believe, I remember that.
Me, too.
I mean, we'd be willing to say to the board, look, we're not saying, get rid of them, we'll put them somewhere at the more, we meet out here, and we say, let's put them somewhere else, but I just think, back here, we're going to be disturbing what, some of these homes are really nice, if you've been up in here, and they're not going to want us back here, tearing all this out of here, and putting planting these in, and having to restore their yards.
I would agree that it's established back there.
So we elected not to do the plantings, though, when the yards were torn up?
Well-
You never know at that point.
I mean, I think that's, I mean, I guess the question for me is really, do the homeowners understand that they're not getting the, I, I don't know if they have any expectation of getting any of these plants, that's, that's the question.
And the neighboring property owners that came out to the public hearings and asked for the screening, and we agreed to put the screening on the plan, to just remove it without, I don't know. Mark, I, I get what you're saying, that no one's going to see it, et cetera, et cetera, but I just, I mean, I just think you need to-
I'd just like to add something, if I may, while we're having a discussion on this particular project, two things. We've had some drainage complaints on Mockingbird, and I know the plan shows an easement on the Mockingbird subdivision, but it, it apparently doesn't line up with the discharge from that drainage feature to the south at the wood spot.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, it doesn't let easements, it's not in the right spot, so I would like to see something to kind of remedy that situation, because that's, that's a problem for us. And similar, on the, on the opposite side, I know some improvements have been made that weren't originally shown to, to the pond for an outlet control structure and everything, but as it turns out, again, we got a complaint, and I think there's a guy with horses, and his concern is water with fertilizer, et cetera, from that pond may run into where he allows his horses to drink the water, and that would require a little modification to, to take care of that, that issue that has arisen. I think the, I think the one is kind of minor, I'm not sure what it's going to take to remedy the other one, but as part of this mix, if we do agree to eliminate some, some trees, I think we need to try to address these two issues.
And I would just add that if you're going, if you're going to eliminate and revise the plan, then they might as well take off any of the stormwater features that aren't existing out there.
So, so Mark, let me ask a question, I mean, how do you propose that we close the open switch with the neighbors, who we all agree did ask for the screening? We're not saying that the current screening isn't the better alternative, how do we close that switch?
At this point, I'm, I hear what you're saying, and I, I just know from the history of this project, and my vast years of experience in the field, that we're, we're probably going to wind up putting what's here on the plan. So, you know, I understand where you're going, and I understand the board's position, and I agree, it was there, so I, I just, you know, we, we came because some of the homeowners were saying, you know, don't really want it or need it, so we're making an attempt.
So, so Mark, for, for like, what is it, a buck fifty a letter? You send a registered letter to these folks that invites them to respond back to the town?
To the town?
And we collect the responses back from these people?
I did, I have pictures.
Okay, so I'd just like to add though-
It's not that we don't trust you, Mark, it's just that we don't trust you.
No, I understand, they'd be registered, I'd turn you out.
I just want to add that, I mean, I've been out here, and this, this row of trees that I guess backs up the Dana Estates that's shown on the plan, I mean, it looks great on a piece of paper, but I can't speak to over here, but over here, these have accomplished a lot.
I would agree with that.
These people, I think we've got to fit these people better than these trees up on the hillside.
These people did not complain, it was this side.
Yeah, it was like, I agree with that.
And that's because they have a sharp drop-off, right? They're not going to be-
There's, I would agree that you can't see anything from here.
Well, here's Mockingbird and Dana Estates-
So you're talking about the bottom part?
Which is where we have a little drainage issue over here, I'd rather address the drainage issue than-
If it's not visible to the neighbors, I think that's fine, but I think the upper one-
That, that I can't speak to.
So I'll notify these people here that touched this strip. Does that agree?
Okay.
But again, in consideration, we're going to address this drainage issue with some fish.
Well, definitely, we'll meet with you out there.
And your own lots, Mark, the people who, if you have sold lots there, you know.
Do I, do I write the letters, let's respond to Pam?
Yeah, I think we haven't responded to the plan in the office within-
Offering an email-
We should see the letter before it goes out.
Well, I will, I'll do that.
Offering an email alternative?
I'm sorry?
Offering an email alternative?
We'll offer them an email address for the discharge.
Okay. That sound fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mark, I can go up there and go look at that?
Excuse me?
It's just that this private, they're private residences now, so I just-
Yeah, but I don't own it, so-
You don't own, all right.
So if they shoot you, it wasn't me.
I mean, I, when I was out there-
That's why we asked someone from the town to go with Michelle out there, so that they're-
And I was approached immediately by an owner, because I was out there, and-
No, I won't bother them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where they camp.
Okay. So, Mark, you'll follow up with the letters for the folks along Top Bridge, Scott, based on your recommendation, and I remember that is a fairly sharp drop-off, I think we're okay with the-
I'd rather address the drainage, I think the people would rather do that.
Well, then, along the bottom, do we need to notify the lot owners?
I think we should notify, I think you just notify everybody, but I just, if there's something else that we need to change there, is that easement going to affect lot owners off this subdivision site?
Potential, potential, as part of the resolution, we're going to have to get into it.
Okay. So is there a different letter, then, that should go to those folks?
Well, it's a different, it's a different matter. The trees are the trees, the drainage is the drainage, two different things. The town, I see the town getting involved with any-
With the drainage?
With drainage.
Okay. All right. The trees, again, on this, on the, I want to say south side, is that the south side or the bottom side? I can't remember what north is.
Dana Estates or south?
The Dana Estates side, I think, that, south-ish?
Yeah.
Those are, those are well up above where the residents are on the other side?
Oh, yeah.
And they're not sold yet? Those lots are not sold yet?
No, they're all sold. There's something that hasn't been built.
Nobody can see those trees, nobody.
You're not going to see it, it's, I, you're not going to see it.
These people can't see the trees, and the people down here can't see the trees, they're just going to be a row of trees in the middle of woods.
It's a pretty large drop-off.
And so they've done all the clearing that they're going to do to install these lots, even if they're not building?
No, they haven't done all the clearing on fifteen and sixteen.
So you're saying nobody will see, I just want to make sure that we're-
I don't think they'll, I don't think they're going to clear all the way back to where they're, where the lot line is.
They're not going to have to clear?
It's beyond the disturbance area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's an issue with that.
So since it's beyond the disturbance area, I think that's different than the one on the other side, where it's not beyond the disturbance area, it's along the edge. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda tonight is a renewal of the peddler's permit for In the Doghouse on Route 82.
Another year, huh? I don't know of any issues, do you? Are there?
Yes, we're going to talk about it just a while. Okay. When did we see you last?
I guess, two years ago.
Yeah. And how long is your permit?
Am I in the doghouse?
Yeah, you're in the doghouse.
I got all the insurance.
Your permit expired in August of 2013.
Yeah, but I got, I got all the insurance from last year, and, and the, I just, I think I applied, but I don't, I didn't show up.
You may not have shown.
Okay. We can only grant these for a year at a time.
Yeah.
So you're more than 12 months down on your permit already.
Okay.
Do we have proof that you had continuous insurance the whole time, and all the approvals that you needed the whole time, even though you didn't technically have your permit?
Yep, right here.
Okay.
I'll see.
Do we have them in the planning office? I want to make sure we've got all your paperwork in the planning office.
I didn't give these in, I just, I went through my folder, and apparently, I forgot the-
Make sure we get copies of it, then, if we would, in the planning office?
Yep.
We don't want you operating without a permit.
Yeah, I understand.
There's reasons why you need a permit, and cannot legally within the town, so-
Right, right, yep, yep.
Was he called in, or is he just coming in?
I think you realized you didn't have your permit, or what made you come back?
No, I, I do it every year, and I get the insurance, and I came in, this, and Pam pointed out I didn't, and I went through my folder, and then I don't see my $50 permit thing, but I got everything else.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it.
Would it be better for us to have your permit expire after, because it seems like you run, this is kind of the middle of your run, right? So maybe have your permit expire in the wintertime, as opposed to in the summertime?